We'll call the need to order please. Yes. Andrea Johnson, Pierre Conrath Robinson, Andrea Anderson, Pierre Conrath. We have to come to the Stanford pledge.
The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this point, we're going to have comments from visitors because we are so time locked today, we are really going to try to keep them very short and focus on what is on the agenda. So if there are any visitors who would like to speak to any items on the agenda, please raise your hand if you recognize.
Judy, can I ask you a question?
Yes, well, now, again, let me just.
I just want to know if those are extra agendas?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Yes, now, the agenda will say December 8th because that was the postponed meeting when we did not have a forum, so we're leaving today. So we're going to try to keep comments only on the agenda, on topic, and the board will, of course, listen but not answer. This is not a time to have a dialogue or anything. So, all right, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address anything on the agenda, this will be a time for visitor comments on that. Yes?
Hey, I'm Greg Clara, 431 Stockville. Just a general question on the budget, this is number seven, financial update on the budget piece. Haven't been attending meetings in a while. I guess I just express my concern as a citizen. As I look at some of the numbers, we continue to see an increase in the budget cost per student. The last I checked was around $21,000 per student. Back in 2015, it was, I'm sorry, back in 2011, it was $15. So when you look at the financial aspects of the school, my question is relative to the financial aspects of the performance and the teacher salaries and principal salaries. And what are those based on? Because if they're based on performance, the state score ranking is down over the last few years. And as such, if I was based on, if my salary was based on performance, we wouldn't be getting raises next year. So just a question to the board on the surface of what we're holding our teachers accountable to. If the assessments are going down, it should have an impact on what is happening in the school. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seen none. Great, we'll move forward with the agenda. Consent calendar, the consent counter is comprised of our November 17th minutes of the budget workshop, November 17th minutes of the school board, and our December enrollment data. What's the board's pleasure?
We'll do seven. My second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any announcements? Any announcements from the board? All right. Discussion items, the principal update. Kate, I know you sent us some information on the student-led conferences. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, you just have all the data, you got some parent feedback, and we've been designing the policy, constructed by all the things to plan for the future, considering the future data, and things that have evolved over the next couple of years.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments you'd like to make about somebody you probably tend to be?
Yeah, I thought they were.
I enjoy, I really enjoy them.
Sure.
Seeing my, seeing my child show what he's learning, and, you know, and he gives the experience of standing up with him in front of a group of students speaking as well. It's small, but I thought we could.
All right, thank you. The Marshallwood Student Representative, no one here has seen it?
Yes, the first round of parent-teacher conferences was hosted on November 15th. Thanksgiving break then proceeded a few weeks after that, from November 23rd to November 28th. The Holiday Disarm was hosted just a few weeks ago on December 3rd. It was very successful, and all the proceeds are going to help fund expenses for the tutor class of 2018. And Winter Break will begin just a few weeks on Friday, December 3rd, and we will have to be returning until January 2nd.
You said December 3rd, that's not going right, December 23rd? Okay, I think that's a nice phrase. Great, thank you. Summer's Worth Student Rep, Bailey Hines.
So our student council has been holding their annual clothes drive the entire month of December so far. We have our clothes fair Friday night from 5:00 to 7:30 in the past. This all goes directly back to our committee. It's just really lovely to see, and actually, this will help us with that, and we donate with lots of leads, that was great. And then we're also planning a festival, Spirit Week, for next week, just to get everyone's spirits up for the holidays. Our National Honor Society has been wrapping gifts at the fire station in Summer's Worth to, you know, help our community. And we're also donating toys for the Toys for Tots fundraisers. We're participating in Project Gratitude, which is something new to us and many, and it's essentially when teachers and other staff members in the school pick students that have positively impacted their lives and they pass message along. And we're actually doing it from the other perspective as well, where the students pick staff members that affected them, and they tell them that. So, bringing that, and we're also hosting a teacher luncheon this Friday, where we'll be wrapping gifts for the staff. The Interconnect Club helped the rec department of Summer's Worth last Friday with their candy cane hunt. It was a really fun, chilling time, quite literally, it was the coldest night of the year. And we're also selling candy grams to hand out before break. Our UTE has been doing Sam the Stump, Sam the Stump gift in several elementary schools within the district. It's just to educate them on drugs and alcohol and just kind of prevention behind that. And they're also working on a project focused specifically, I think it's like a film, not entirely, yeah, okay, a film, just to educate the community. As far as class councils go, the freshman class is hosting their first official fundraiser. It's going to be Texas Roadhouse-based fundraiser, where they get a percentage of the proceeds that are made one night. The sophomore class has their games night this Friday from 7:00 to 10:00 at the high school, and they're also continuing with their after snack fundraiser as a success for them. The junior class is planning our prom classroom show fundraiser, which is like the biggest fundraiser over here. It's huge and helping us bring in funds for prom. And we're also selling things from a mixed bag catalog that we've done, and it's been very successful before, so we're continuing doing that. And then the senior class has been preparing for their senior banquet in Project Brad, and all winter's worth has to go.
Thank you very much. And as usual, we appreciate it very much having our student representatives, but you, we know you're still in class, so you are free, we really thank you so much. So, thank you for joining us and for the updates. All right, next on the agenda is spreadsheet, Marshallwood spreadsheet or stock, spreadsheet that we get. Again, I continue to find it useful, I hope some of the, I don't know, some other people on the board have asked for it and looked at it, because part of what it shows us as we look at it is how quickly things can change from month to month. Just looking at this month compared to last month, there's more involved, there's more money involved, there's more people involved. So, it's interesting to see how quickly they can change. Any other questions, thoughts, or comments on that? And that's one of the. And that would be me, excuse me.
I have a question that is not related to this, but we seem to have an expiration date on our emails, so unless we print out this information, it expires after, I don't know what the time period is. So I can't access it on my iPad anymore.
Right.
And Andrea's had the same problem, so, and I've had this problem.
And this is your S A U eye check?
Yes.
So what we need to change is, there's something within what I, Alaska.
Okay, thank you.
And.
I just now, I'm all forget again, because I've been meaning to ask you, so I'm sorry for interrupting the meeting.
Check your computer, I'll check tomorrow.
Mine last year. I, yeah.
There's something within the settings that you can change that saves it, that doesn't.
All right, I'll.
I might want to take a look.
And see if I can figure it out. I figured it was a server setting or something.
No, it's a setting within the path.
All right, I will take a look at that.
All right, the next discussion item is the activity bus review. And just as a comment, we did not get counts for last one. Just passing that one.
We didn't, okay.
And the reason we have this sort of discussion is that this will become an action item in our January meeting to determine what we're going to do going forward for the rest of this year itself. Just that, so, so, any, anything people would like to discuss at this point? Okay. And we are moving right along. We have, I believe, no action items this evening. Looking around, we will be taking, we look, after we've learned it in our public, we'd like our actual, we can take them out. All right. Financial update, that would be the budget, that is the current years, this is our current year budget. And I have, I noticed one of the changes in it, I noticed that transportation has been encumbered pretty much, what we expected to be encumbered, we see the, we see the kindergarten savings on the back end of midday kindergarten, we see those savings in available balance. That's what we see. Anyone else, questions?
The discussion last time regarding the bathroom arrangement. So we talked about encumbering that for this year, so that's still part of my.
Yes, I think we can talk about that right now.
I just wanted to make sure that we still have that on.
Well, let's, this is a good time to talk about it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I broke on the news, I have to send it up to my other, to my other information. No, I have it over there. I wonder, Kate, do you live in the mall? Bathroom? I got 27.5. I have it over here.
No, I have it, I have it.
Okay, Marie has it. So, so, just to refresh the board, remembering on this, it was an item that we, as a board, decided not to go out and, it's a little more durable, it's 27.5. 27.5 and it's going to. And we felt that it was important enough that we would try to encumber that money as soon as we could, it looked like we had enough balance, and that we would then do that work as soon as we could possibly could, when our students and the vendors are not teaching. So is there any discussion on, 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 on that, or what's the board's pleasure on that?
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with redoing that round of proposals for the approximate 27.5, and to have that encumbered this year's budget and confuse, you know, when the tickets get out.
We have, we have a motion to encumber 27.100 to be used to repair and update the bathrooms in the main building. And we have seconds. Is there any further discussion?
Is there, is there any reason for us to wait until we know we're not going to?
So, I was just going to say that probably, we can encumber it now, and if we find that we need the dollars, we'll come back to the board and say, you know, we had X amount of students move in, we need to take those dollars and ship them someplace else in the budget. So, we can encumber them now, and if it looks like we need the dollars, we'll come back.
So it's what I was bringing up, right?
So, because we won't do the work until school.
So the idea of the, like, now is to show how we would like to be available in balance, and if there's any questions, we can move forward. We just like all of you, become vulnerable and get together and get into these decisions.
Any further clarification to the question, to the discussion? Then all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Thank you, Karen. Thank you for bringing that up, Tom, I forgot, I forgot. Any other budget business of the current budget business? New business, we do have a couple items.
Excuse me. I have something here.
Oh, yes, on the way, I'll go back to the budget.
Right. I just wanted to comment, you know, comment from the, from the audience here on accountability of the staff and the cost per student. I'm not prepared this time to talk about the cost per student, but what I'd offer is, in last year's minutes, and I believe the meeting was on the 16th of last year, we went into great detail about the cost per student. And so we could, we could definitely resurrect that to have another conversation. A cost per student is a very difficult conversation to have. And so, I just wanted to say I'm not ignoring that comment, it's just I'm not prepared at this point to have a cost per student conversation. And then as for accountability, I think there's, there's different ways to look at accountability, and the one that was brought up of using the state scoring is definitely one of them, but there's, there's a whole host of other, other avenues. And one of the things I'd like to share is that this year, the Rollins for Grace School, in helping with reduce the cost of what it costs to run this school, and we're going to do a little bit of more conversation on that tonight with the budget committee, has gone to a coaching model, which has really changed the way education is offered. And so, like I said, state score is one way to look at it, but another way to look at it is how the staff is working with and handling that complete cultural shift of how education is offered. And talking to parents, and we mentioned earlier about the student-led conferences, there's a lot of great things happening at R T S, and the staff is directly responsible for that. So, I just would offer that there's a lot of different ways to account for performance. And so, you know, maybe that, I'm good.
All right, so, let's see, that was, so now we're finished with budget, we're going to new business, and we do have a couple items that did not get onto the agenda. And one is, we had a group, which is children's, a late start for their high school for every day. And we have asked, and they've been invited, to sit on that subcommittee with them. And our rep, at the very first meeting, was Andrea Anderson, who will now give us a little update as to how that meeting went and what's going on with it.
Meeting went very well. It's very early, early stages of the group, so I don't think, you know, from discussing, having discussions with the group, anything would actually happen. I don't foresee next year. You know, I think initially, we discussed what the group, the committee's, you know, charges were going to be, and it was going to be to renew the data and then really look at feasibility of it, and looking at everything that's going to be affected down the line. And a lot, a lot is going to be affected by changing it. The group also, you know, so right now, we're going out and we're all going to try to do some more, get some more background information about the, the plan is for our next meeting in January, they're going to try to get a representative from U N H, who's been doing studies on sleep cycles of teenagers and students, and have them speak to us. They also, because their Marshallwood school board had attended, or at least some of the representatives on the board, had attended a, I don't know, a seminar or class on areas that have done this, have shifted to a late start. And the person that had this conference, they're going to try to get this particular person that's heading up the start school later, commit the, you know, charter to come and speak to the group, because they, they give us, you know, a copy of all the slides. And so the group really still has a lot of questions, and really wants to see, to quantify what the results would be. It appears like it would be a good thing for all of them, but, you know, is 50 minutes really going to change, or is it going to be two hours to really make a difference? So, so the group really is at the early, early stages. The meeting went very well, everyone was, had a lot of open discussion.
Kate, the other piece I would add to it is, we know Portsmouth and Westwood are going to do that next year.
Yes.
Both groups spent almost two years looking at it to really make a solid decision. And I think they're both going to change times by about 35 minutes, 40 minutes.
Right, so I guess the question is, does the data really state that 35 minutes is a benefit, or? They also said that Bitterford, I guess Bitterford and Sarko, Sarko as well, done it. So, yeah, we're going to try to reach out to these other areas and see what, what really, you know, made them move towards that, and the expense and.
Interestingly, because I think, I know at least for Westwood or Portsmouth, they were starting middle school and high school, and it's going to be that Marshallwood, they consider it high school to do.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's just high school that they're concerned. I think everything is on the table at this point.
Okay.
Again, and I don't, I did not get the impression anyone was in any hurry to flip the switch and go, because I think everybody was like, they need to really, this is going to be a long process.
That's good, so, are there, are notes taken at the meeting that will be published so, just so we could all?
Yes.
I wonder if they would have on their website eventually.
Yeah, we can check that out, but I was just curious.
Right, yeah, you know, looking around the table, there's a number of folks there, you know, high school, middle school, teachers, board, their board members. I did see some people taking notes, but I guess I.
You don't know if it was officially.
I don't know if it was official note taking, yes. I'll, I'll ask if they're going to host anything.
It's anyway, it sounds like you're a volunteer, if you want to, it's another meeting. Are you thinking, that's, you stepped up to take the first meeting, and I was appreciative. We can do a tag team, whatever, if we can. Other questions from the board or administration on that? Thank you, Andrea, I appreciate that. And the other thing, it's new business, is something we, as the school board, we're not, we're not involved in at the beginning, but we have a policy, community use of school facilities. And I know that our recreation committee, I think, or the basketball program, or whatever, I know approached the select board and asked about who covers town groups who use the gym, or who's the school, who's liability insurance to cover that. And Primax ensures both the school and the town, the liability insurance. And, and I know that select board chair, Suzanne Hewer, checked with superintendent Mosca, and they got together with Primax, who had simply suggested an addendum to that, yeah, I can pass this out, you can all have, I'll probably look at, has suggested an addendum. And so this would be an addendum to our policy. So this is just to make us all aware of that, and we will not take action on it tonight, I don't think we have to, or does it, or should we try to take action on it?
I mean, you can look at it and take action, if you just think it's going to hold up. I don't know when the rec department is probably inching to that, however, we're.
We don't have a basket, yeah.
So.
I think, oh, I see, there's a new piece of.
Is the addendum just being repaired?
The addendum is, is on page, it's the very last page, it's wanting to go into place where the blue arrow points. So, the addendum is short and on page, the very last page, and it will fit right into where the blue arrow is pointing. No, it's referring, it's referring to this, it will be near the last page.
Man.
Yes.
Now, I guess, you know, my question is, has this been, this has been changed, I know we switched to insurance, so we have insurance, so, what are we being asked to do? We are being asked to.
This is, that's a very good question. And, and the bottom line is, it will not cost us anymore, it will not cost the town anymore, it will not cost the recreation, the groups who use the school, in this case, the recreation committee or whoever's the oversight, it will not cost them anymore. But it will, but what will happen is, sort of a formal due diligence, they will have to write to Primax or go online to Primax and say, you know, we are the small city parties, and we would like a, whatever it's called, what's it called, a.
Certificate.
Certificate of Insurance, under the school, you know, that it basically, and that's in case something happens in the school, but that really is their fault, that it will not count as a claim against the school, it will count as a claim against the community group. But, oh, it's interesting, because, you know, insurance goes up based on the claims you file. But if, so the school's insurance would go off, I don't know whose insurance would go off, but Kate.
So, are you going to pay for that?
No, we don't believe so, right?
Yes.
Okay, this, this addendum is for the town, with the rec department. It's not for an outside group coming to. Okay, so specifically for the town. It's just, it's, it's the addendum between the town and the school, because the town and the school have the same insurance provider. But if an outside group wants to use this, then it's that the whole. That's a different matter. Then the end of the use policy goes into effect, that's not related to the town. Thank you.
So the addendum is only because it's the first time. Primax covers both town and school. So this was sort of a test case for Primax as well, and a pilot, to try to see how we can make this be as seamless as possible.
Because, you know, I'm thinking of last year, I was able to get, you know, the legal uniform, and I'll be able to certificate the insurance, I helped out through that over in last year. So I'm just trying to understand the differences are now, just that we have new insurance.
Who did you get, were you an outside group or you were part of the town? Was it part of the rec department?
It was, as far as I knew, you know, and I understood it, it was under the.
So, the person who works for the town is able to go in the system online and request specific insurance to insure the school, vice versa. The school progresses online and has specific insurance for the town. So it's as simple as the only thing you should want. And then it's good for you. So in other words, it sounds like the rec committee, the newly constituted rec committee will have to do this once and then they become for all the.
For the year.
For one year, for all their programs, whatever they do.
As long as it's town-led.
As long as it's town-led. I mean, it sounds like it's just a way to do what you did every year.
Right. And that's, I think we have to do that every year.
So it sounds like it's just, and this is, and again, as Jen mentioned, this is, Primax is first time doing this with any, with any municipality and school. So this is, we're the first, we're the first town that are doing it.
Is our legal looking at it?
We had.
Primax is their legal person.
Right, great. So our insurance company, I'm actually going to ask for Tom's advice on this, I mean, are you, if you're a good word user, should, the person use and should have, they should have a policy to enforce, and that's what this is about. So they should be able to, when they fill out this form, they should, Liz Carey is easier, they're going to ask you for certificate of insurance, all that good stuff. So they should fill this out and just have a working knowledge of their office.
the office, so they can, they're not, they're not getting coverage, it's very simple.
If you're good with it, I, I'd make a vote.
I don't think it's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, the word is very basic, it's very basic, so, right, in that case, I'll make a motion that we accept this if it is.
There's a second, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Then, um, all in favor of the signature, I would say aye. Aye. All right, motion carries, and we have a new, um, policy, an updated policy. Yes, yes. All right, uh, I think that concludes new business, is there any other new business?
Yeah.
Old business, uh, Community Connections, we, um, have copies, we were sent copies of the survey, surveys that we're going out in January. Here we go, I got it right here. I, um, I, you know, I think it covers, um, the stuff we've talked about, covering on them, on the, um, on the RGS survey, uh, we haven't noted sort of what the introduction will be, right, I'm assuming you'll also note that it's anonymous, and that people can say, well, we don't know it.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so it does say anonymous, great, okay.
I think that Andrea and I were just, excuse me, September number one, think about the, it says grade levels.
Yeah, which is, which is not accurate.
We need to switch up, so that they are appropriate to the new...
Yes. And the, the reason we're going through this this evening is that, so that, you know, we may, so that, so they could buy any time in January, like, like, wait for our meeting.
Right.
Do we need a motion on this, or is it just consensus?
I believe it is. Okay, and, and I did have one comment on the, one that's going to the middle and high school students at Marshwood, um, I, I was gonna suggest that you, you say, thank you for taking the time to complete the survey, I was gonna say maybe add for each student, K D four one, so we don't get confused with two students on one, I, I have...
Well, we now have some of the log interviews, so, which limited us last year, um, to, it limited us to ten questions, but also limited us as far as what we could do with branching, and, so now, what we can do is, first off, we will be able to divide, when parents say, I have a child in high school, all of those answers will be going to the automatic lunch together, it's gonna be spending five hours, I think, that's time, um, but also, what we can do is, um, on the last page, add a button to go return to the beginning of the survey for filling it out for another kid, so they don't have to, like, read along it.
Oh, that's nice, that's, that's a lovely touch, lovely touch.
So this is sent out?
No, it hasn't, it hasn't.
No, no, this is going to be, it's not...
Email.
And it's gonna look just like this?
No, because it's gonna be an online survey.
Because, yeah, I was wondering, because it's finished, because the, because it only gives the two different...
Yeah, yeah, no, it's one through five, so one being not satisfied, five being incredibly satisfied, and, and there will be one through four, if I should... It's black or white, Tom.
Um, and, and number three, a question on number three, you get to the middle and high school, um, how will, and, and I, I understand the question, I think, but I've heard it twice, how well has the second year of transition gone for your students? I think, oh, is it only because I, I, my child cannot be in our second year, so I'm, so I don't hope there's a different way to work that, because maybe the students' first year, so, so I just, I'm just, I don't know how to...
How well this...
Maybe you don't even know how to translate, you know, where the... I think you noted that we're in the second year of transition, somewhere else, I'm not sure, and, and...
Okay, so how, how, how was your student, how well was your student?
Any other, um, comments, thoughts? I think you guys are doing a great job with that, and... And I think, I think we're all in agreement, so like consensus will perform with it, and at this point, I know there's time to set it up, January, January.
I mean, we gotta send, you wanna, are you gonna send it to the ref, or do you wanna send it to me, send it?
I would send it to, uh, you hold the email list for the RGS students?
Uh, um, you could probably send that to Kate, and then do you wanna send the, the other, or not send it to Mary?
Okay, yes, that's exactly, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, transportation, um, any, we have a, we have a short update for you on, on the late bus transportation possibilities, right?
Oh, okay, yeah, sure, so we talked about, um, the continuing of the late bus, um, Mary sent me a quote for us to, if students, so if we went out and used Marshwood's late bus situation, they would pick up at the middle school, the high school, do the switch, go to the central, center school, and then drop off the Legion, drop off our Losberg students at the Legion, the cost per day for us would be twenty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. So if we estimated the end of February through, uh, June sixth, which she has as the estimated last day, the cost from February to June would be twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred and nine dollars and forty-six cents. I asked, um, first, do, I emailed them a few times, I know they were busy with all the strike potential, so, um, that may be wide, not heard back from them, but, and then, I guess the, so that's the short-term decision, and then the long-term decision is into the next year.
Well, we have removed it from the book, so for next year, so we'll, we'll have to see where that goes, but, so this is information to bring as, for our, when we make the final decision, unless anyone has any questions right now.
I think we need to answer the question for the community.
I, and I will, and I said, good emails and to call, so, I will, um, I will continue to try and get that answer, but I think even if we look at what they had done, I think it's really, let's see, it was fifty-some dollars a day.
No, I, I'm more concerned that we can't contract with them, that's the answer, I'm sure that breaks it.
So I will double-check that as well.
Yeah, yes, any other comments, questions, thank you. Yeah, um, let's go over the Marshall contract, I don't believe we have any, so future meeting dates, um, we have our, our next school board meeting on, on the January twelfth, Saturday, January fourteenth, will be when the budget committee hosts the public hearing on the school, you can, yeah, Saturday, January fourteenth, will be when the budget committee hosts the public hearing on the school, like, school district budget, that will be here in, in this room, there's more, make people aware of that, and on, um, borrow this down, oh, I did, and also on Saturday, January twenty-first, I guess they'll, the, the New Hampshire School Board Association has its annual meeting, but we'll need the meeting before that, so we'll talk about that. Uh, school events that we should know about, or none listed or not? All right, it's time for closing comments, um, from visitors, anything that's been discussed on the agenda is open for comment, so, looking for comments, if you're on it.
I have a question, I mean, it wasn't on the agenda.
Name and address.
Mark City of two forty-nine, Con Road. Uh, the question is regarding the, uh, the letters that the Losbergs, uh, sent to the board, I understand by number thirteen, I was just reading it on, from the last, the minutes of the last meeting, that obviously we can't discuss it in front of the, of the public, I get that, and it's perfectly clear, I was just wondering, question one, has the board, uh, in private addressed the letters, and is there gonna be a public and or private letter in response to the letter that was written to you?
We do not respond to questions, but, you know, we are, we are hearing, so thank you.
You don't respond, I don't see any answer, you don't respond to questions?
Right, this is time for your comments, you don't get to dialogue, thank you.
Can I ask, can this be added to an agenda, how do, how do, how do we get the answer to that, I know I can, how do I ask that question weekly?
Yes, it would have to be covered agenda. Any other comments from, any, uh, closing comments by the board, we do have non-public to go into, so we'll, we'll turn that one to do that. Any comments from the board? All right, uh, thank you very much, then we will, uh, we will, we will take a motion to move to non-public.
One second.
Do you need an answer? Yes, how, Andrea Anderson? Yes.